Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for May 19, Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Lehman. Counselor Brennan. Counselor Contreras. And Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you all. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
And justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Counselors? Make sure to speak up into your microphone.
Counselor Contreras. I make a motion.
Counselor Brennan.
Everything's freezing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for May 19, 2020.
I have a motion.
I'd like to second.
Okay, and Counselor Contreras has a second. Sorry about that, Matt. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Lehman. Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
And Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to our consent agenda, are there any changes, corrections, additions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Whiting.
I would like to pull item 4C1, please.
4C1.
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 Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion. Counselor Lehman.
Mars. I'll make a motion to adopt the amended consent agenda.
Thank you.
This is Jay Whiting, I'll second that.
All right, Jay got to the buzzer first, so Counselor Member Whiting has a second on the amended consent agenda. And before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for May 19 of 2020. 4A1 approves the minutes from the May 5, 2020 meeting. 4A2 approves a memorandum of understanding with LELS Police Patrol, increasing healthcare savings plan contributions, and authorizes its execution. 4A3 approves an off-sale and Sunday liquor license for Van Cambo Incorporated, doing business as Southside Liquors located at 1667 Seventeenth Avenue East. 4B1 approves a submission of an application to CenterPoint Energy for a community safety grant. 4D1 approves suspension of city code 130.45 from May 20 to June 2, 2020, to allow parking lot maintenance from 2:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily at Walmart Supercenter located at 18, excuse me, 8101 Old Carriage Court. 4E1 accepts a quote and awards a contract to Gopher Seal, Gopher State Seal Co. Incorporated in the amount of $52,438.34 for the 2020 Trail Sea Coating Project. 4E2 authorizes the execution of an agreement with the Metropolitan Council to participate in the 2020 Citizen Assisted Monitoring Program. 4E3 authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with Blondo Consulting, LLC for archaeological monitoring services for the reroute stormwater to protect historic sites project, which is Storm Tac 19 Tac 003, and that is in the amount of $65,223.50. 4E4 authorizes the construction and purchase of a street lighting system for the Unbridled Avenue project, Avenue project, which is CIF 20 Tac 014, and that is in the amount of $169,999.61 to be performed by the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. 4E5 authorizes the purchase of playground equipment for Holmes Park from St. Croix Recreation Fund Playgrounds Incorporated in the amount of $79,200. And 4E6 authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with WSB and Associates, Incorporated, to perform a feasibility study for the utility extension project, which is Sewer Tac 21 Tac 001, located at Marist Street, 13th Avenue, and Hanson Avenues, in the amount of $135,854.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion to approve the modified consent agenda and a second. It's been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. And by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
I'm made it, Johnny.
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
And Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much. The modified consent agenda has been approved. Moving ahead to item number five, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. An item not on the agenda. Did we take any written comments, Mr. Reynolds?
There were no written comments, sir.
Seeing we have no written comments that were submitted, no one in the audience would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda, we would move forward then to item number six, which is business that was removed from consent agenda. 4C1, which is a mural donation from Old National Bank. And Counselor Whiting, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, first of all, I would like to thank Old National Bank for their generous donation for this mural project. Just a question, has this project been fully funded now?
Jay Tobin, Mayor, Council, there was no cost associated for the city for this project. The mural previously existed at Old National Bank on the Marshall Avenue site, which has now been closed. And as part of their closure, they were trying to figure out what to do with the mural. So the mural was donated to the city, valued at approximately $5,000. It has now since been installed in the offices at the city. If you look at your screen now, you should be able to see what it looks like, where it's been installed. So now, as you enter the community center from any vantage point, anyone coming to and from the community center will get to enjoy what highlights a real nice mural along one of our trails in the city, also celebrates the history of Shakopee, and now can be enjoyed for generations to come there at the community center.
Excellent.
That's great. I appreciate that. Thank you for that information. I thought it might maybe need some more donations, so I was going to tee that up for you, but it sounds like you got it. Now I do recognize it now that you mentioned it, but thanks again to Old National Bank for that donation. That's all I have. With that, I would make a res- offer to approve resolution R 2020-071, accepting mural donation from Old National Bank.
Brennan, seconds.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion? Further discussion? By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Great donation by the bank and a mural for all the community to see. Let's move ahead then to item 7A, vacation of a public drainage and utility easement. This is a public hearing, and I would entertain a motion. Counselor Contreras.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Brennan made the motion. Counselor Lehman.
Second.
Thank you very much. A motion and a second on the table to open the public hearing. By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Lehman. Counselor Brennan. Counselor Contreras. Mayor Mars.
Aye. The public hearing is now open, and we'll have Michael Kurski present. Welcome, thank you.
Mayor and council, the first item is the vacation of public drainage and utility easements as dedicated within Lot 1, Block 1, Outlet B of the Canterbury Park Seventh Edition. So this is, highlighted in red here are the current utility easements that are going to be abandoned here. Okay, next. And then here's a highlight. So you all approved a new plat for unbridled, so now we have to basically abandon the utility easements that were eliminated on that plat, so that's what we're doing tonight. Go ahead. So Canterbury Park, as I said, is building unbridled. These existing easements are no longer of any public use. New public drainage and utility easements were secured with the recording of the final plat of Canterbury Park 11th Edition, which is a plat dedicated to the Unbridled Avenue Right-Away and was already approved by the City Council.
Okay. Questions of staff? I guess I have one. I'll start. If we can go back to the map, so the black line is what we're vacating?
Mayor and council, that's correct.
And then these are going to stay?
Mayor and council, that's correct. So there are new utility relocations or abandements that are in the process, so we've worked with Shakopee Public Utilities and other utilities in the area to relocate the necessary utilities in the new unbridled road.
Yes, honor. Can we go to the next map? And so I was just questioning the dotted lines in Lot 1, Block 1. The dotted lines would remain, however, the black, heavy-duty black line is what we're vacating.
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other questions of staff?
I have a question.
Counselor Lehman.
Hello.
Was it Matt? Yeah, go ahead.
On the colorful map where it shows the black, the color map with the black lines and the red outline, outlining which easements, the easement along Shenandoah, wouldn't we keep an easement on the edge of Shenandoah, the new constructed Shenandoah?
Mayor and council, we have those easements already as part of Shenandoah.
See if I can capture this.
Okay, I didn't catch that.
Mayor and council, we have those easements as part of either unbridled or the Shenandoah plat. These are duplicative easements that we don't need anymore.
Okay. So we have the corresponding easements on Shenandoah, and if we remove the black line on Shenandoah, then we still have coverage over there.
Yes. Mayor and council, you approved a new plat. I believe it was the last meeting that basically covers and puts in new easements in place.
Okay.
Follow-up question, Counselor Lehman? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So you're, am I hearing this right, that with this vacation, we will still have an easement, we'll still have an easement along Shenandoah?
Mayor and council, that's correct. You have all the necessary easements on the new unbridled and on Shenandoah because you've approved other plats. These are ones that were just remaining that are no longer needed.
More questions of staff?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, more questions of staff? If not, this is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this vacation? Did we receive any written comments on this, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir, we did not receive any written comments on this one.
All right. So I would entertain a motion then to close the public hearing. If we're done with comments. Counselor Brennan made a motion.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Counselor Brennan.
Second.
Second.
Second by Contreras.
Okay, a motion has been made and second by Counselor Contreras to close a public hearing. Any further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Lehman. Counselor Brennan. Counselor Contreras. Mayor Mars.
Aye. The public hearing is now closed. Entertain a motion. Counselor Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R 2020-060, a resolution approving the vacation of public drainage and utility easements as dedicated within Lot 1, Block 1, and Outlet B, Canterbury Park Seventh Edition, located along Shenandoah Drive in Barrenshire. It's a private drive within Canterbury Park Development.
Second. Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Further discussion? Further discussion? By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Lehman. Counselor Brennan. Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That vacation passes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A point of order? Point of order, please.
Yes, Counselor Lehman.
It's saying that Andy's bandwidth is low on my screen, and everybody else's bandwidth is showing as low. I don't know if it's on that side. Can we check into that, please?
Yeah, we, we're aware of that, Counselor Lehman. We don't know where it's coming from at this point. It could be coming from Zoom, but we are aware of it, and, and it is clear that there's some delay between votes, but we're hearing everything, we just may not be able to see everything. So that's kind of the status at this point. If it does go down, or if there is a, a larger deterioration, we'll take a recess and then figure out what we need to do at that point.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, counselor. Moving ahead to 7B, a vacation of a public drainage and utility easement, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Counselor Contreras.
Motion to open a public hearing. Motion to open a public hearing.
Brennan, seconds.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan to open the public hearing. By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. The public hearing is now open, and staff will present.
Mayor and council, this is the vacation of a public drainage and utility easement as dedicated in Lot 1, Block 1, Friendship Church. This is the subject property. It's a fairly large property occupied in the center, as you can see, by the church. And so this is the original plat. The hatched areas are the current easements. And so the planning commission will be hearing this case on Thursday night, but this is a new plat for addition to Windermere. As part of that, they are, have purchased a portion on both the north and southwest corner of the church, and so as part of that, they will be dedicating new drainage and utility easements as part of this new plat for Windermere. So proposed, it's at the corner of County Highway 78, West Emerystown Road, the new public drainage and utility easements will be secured with the final plat of Windermere South Third Edition. Planning commission, as I said, is this Thursday, and council will be seeing this in June. So we do not record the vacation until the new plat is ready to be recorded.
With the new easements?
Yes.
Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor, Matt Lehman. Is it safe to assume that we're going to get an easement along 80, 78, and 15 for future improvements in the new plat?
Mayor and council, that's correct. The county has set aside the necessary right-of-way they want for potential future improvements at that intersection and then along the adjoining streets.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was my same question on that. Other questions of staff, counselors? Seeing none? This is a public hearing. Would the applicant like to come forward? And if not, any public that would like to come forward and make comment in regard to Seeing none? Counselors?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Ms. Whiting, second.
I have a motion to close the public. I have a motion to close the public hearing and a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The public hearing is now closed in regard to 7B, a vacation and utility easement. Counselors?
Mayor?
Counselor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R 2020-061, a resolution approving the vacation of public drainage and utility easement as dedicated within Lot 1, Block 1, Friendship Church, located at the northwest corner of Cassaw 78 and the west of, and the west of Mary, Marystown Road, Cassaw 15.
Brennan, seconds.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion? 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 By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye.
7B, a vacation for a public drainage and utility easement's been passed. Thank you all very much. Moving ahead to 7C, public hearing, vacation for a portion of Veerling Drive on Drive West, right-of-way. This is a public hearing, counselor? Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Counselor Lehman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The public hearing is now open, and staff will present.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So this vacation of a portion of the Veerling Drive right-of-way drainage and utility easements in the West Shakopee Gateway. So this is the subject property. This is the property that we currently have under contract to Opus, and they're planning to close in June. So it's 2,300 Veerling Drive. It's a 15.85 acres, current zoning is BP, and the applicant in this particular action is the city of Shakopee. So this is the vacation. Click it again. So the area highlighted in red is the adjustment in the property line. If you can click it again. So...
How do we see this on our end?
It should be coming up, council member. Can you see it?
No, I don't see it. Anybody else see it?
Is the map on the screen?
It's not on my screen.
No, you haven't shared the screen.
Okay. Just hang on.
We'll be right with you.
We're gonna make it happen.
Something's happening.
There we go.
There we go. All right. Oops, go back there. We can talk them through. Go back to the color. There you go. So this is the subject property. It's 15.85 acres, currently owned by the Economic Development Authority under contract to Opus. As I said, it's a business park zone, and we are the applicant, the city. Go ahead. So this is the area that we will be abandoning. Go to the next piece. So the area highlighted in red is the, the darker line is the existing area. Removing that out, and if you can hit the, there you go. The reason why is because of the setback requirements. If we left the property line as it is, that building ends up at a very odd angle, and it loses about 10,000 square feet in the building. So we've made this adjustment. The applicant, the city, and Opus will work together when this gets final plat to ensure that we have the necessary drainage and utility easements over the new property line area. But this allowed the building to be 83,000 square feet instead of just under 70,000 square feet. So planning commission approve this 6-0, and approve the vacation, and Opus will file the necessary easements for sidewalk landscaping utilities when the final plat is brought forward to you in June.
Okay. Thank you. Counselors, are there any questions of staff?
I have one.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. My, my only question is that the amount of water coming off the parking lot in the building, by making that really close to the road with that easement, are we gonna have enough stormwater runoff area?
So mayor and council, you'll see the larger plat. There's a new... So currently, there are two very large basins to the rear of the property. They will be building a new infiltration basin behind the building. So to the south of where that angle was on that building, there will be a new basin so that it'll pick up all that extra water off the road in their parking lots.
Are there going to be two ponds?
Mayor and council, there's actually gonna be three ponds.
Okay.
This is a regional area, so Doggie Dews, the site we have under contract to MWF, and the assisted, the facility for the rehab facility all drain into those larger ponds, but they have other steps before they get there, so it's timed properly. In doing the stormwater calculations, they were a little short because of these two large buildings, and that required to build, they're gonna build another smaller basin that will hook into the two larger basins.
Counselor Lehman?
The parking lot farthest to the north, do we know where that drains to?
Mayor and council, that will drain to the new pond that'll be to the Veerling side of the speculative building. Churney will actually drain into the two large existing ponds.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch where this parking lot's gonna drain to on the north.
So mayor and council, there are two existing large regional ponds to the rear of this property on the southern end. As part of this development, Opus is gonna build a third pond that will be behind the building that you just saw, and that will drain the northern parking lot in that building, and then Churney actually drains into the regional basin.
Churney goes into the regional ponds, and then the rest of the sites, sites plural, will be draining into the other two ponds that will be built on this plat. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, maybe it'd be better if we pop up that map again?
Good idea.
Okay. We're gonna make it happen. So here's the map again.
So if you see where that large circle is past the red, as you go down Veerling, you'll see just to the lower right-hand corner, there is a new pond that Opus will be constructing. So that northern parking lot in Building A will drain into that smaller pond. And eventually, that smaller pond drains into the two large ponds that we've already built on the site. So everything in this region eventually ties into those two large regional ponds.
Okay. Counselor Whiting, did that answer your questions?
My, my question are related to more of the concern of if we had to do any work on that roundabout or expansion on that road, if we'd have enough property there to do what we might need to do with it.
So mayor and council, that was built to handle the necessary traffic, and as part of the easements that we'll have, it'll give us access for maintenance and any repairs we need to do.
Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? Seeing none? This is a public hearing. Would the applicant or any representatives like to come forward? Would, would any residents like to come forward and make comment in regard to this vacation? Did we receive any written record, written questions? Or Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir, we did not.
All right.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Whiting, second.
I have a motion and a second, and Counselor Lehman, did you make the second?
No, sir.
Counselor Whiting?
Whiting.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting to close the public hearing. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The public hearing is now closed. Counselors?
Mayor?
Counselor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R 2020-070. I think that's all.
Whiting, second.
I have a motion by Contreras, a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion? Further discussion? Discussion? Seeing none by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye.
That vacation is approved. That completes our public hearings. Moving ahead then to 8Day1, which is our monthly financial review. And Nate will present. Welcome.
While Nate is getting up here...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds?
Oh, no, that's fine. I just wanted to say while Nate is getting up here, we now have a good month's data in regards to the impact of COVID on the community, and Nate will go into that in some detail. But the reality is, is that we don't really know yet, as you might suspect, what the overall impact is going to be. And so I would just ask that everybody try to remain flexible when we talk about the financial impact. We, we, we have a range that we think it might be in, but the reality is, is even that could change based upon other factors. So with that being said...
Thank you. Nate, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Nate Reinhardt, Finance Director for the city. Within the packet, I've included the monthly financial report along with the financial impacts from COVID-19. With it being early in the year still, there's nothing really outside the norm regarding the monthly financial report, so primarily discuss the COVID-19 financial impacts. The city, early in the, early, kinda in this COVID-19 process, we've set up tracking codes that would allow us to identify invoices and costs related to COVID-19, including time sheets. We believe that by tracking and reviewing on an ongoing basis, it will allow us to make better informed financial decisions and assess the overall impact. On the slide is the summarized data that has been coded to these tracking codes as of April 30th. We've identified approximately 268,000 through the end of April. About 54,000 were for refunds issued for March and April for the community center, ice arena recreational programming. About 146,000 for paid leave for those unable to work or work from home, and 63,000 for personal costs related to COVID-19, such as planning, coordinating, and public safety coverage. Just a couple of notes on the slide here. The refunds, that's, you'll notice that'll be duplicated on the revenue comparison charts as it's more of a revenue impact versus an expense impact. And then for most personal costs, we likely would have incurred these costs whether or not of, you know, regardless of COVID-19, the exception being that they represent time being spent outside the typical responsibilities for those employees. So if you take in those considerations, we're really not seeing much of an expense impact different than what we would have noticed pre-COVID-19, I guess. We've also been tracking the revenue impacts. Again, the analysis is as of April 30th. Through the end of April, we are seeing a year-over-year increase in the number of building permits, up from 1,0268 to 1,449, as well as new single-family housing starts from 46 up from 43. Specifically here, we're seeing a lot of residential improvements. In 2019, through the first quarter last year, we had a couple of large building permits. If you take away those two pretty substantial building permits, we're in line with what we've seen the previous two years. And through April 30th, we're at 30% of our 2020 budget. So we do believe we're on pace to meet budget expectations within the building permit revenue. We are seeing our most significant impacts in terms of park and recreation revenues. Park and recreation revenues are down approximately 243,000 through, through April in comparison with last year. April revenues do include the 54,000 of refunds issued that were processed on the previous slide. Community Center and Ice Arena have been closed since March 17th. There have been some offsetting costs, such as reductions in part-time hours, operating supplies, utilities, and cleaning services. So if you take or consider the offsetting expenses compared to last year, we're down about 200,000 through April 30th. We also looked at other potential impacts to revenues. Lodging tax. The city serves as a pass-through of lodging tax to the Visitors Bureau. The city itself only retains about 5%. Through the first quarter, we were about 15,000 below. In March, we received about half the revenue we normally would see. We're about a month behind on this as, as usually the receipts come in the following month for the previous month, so we have, have yet to see the April, April payment. Based on council approval to prorate the on-sale liquor license, we anticipate about a $30,000 decrease in liquor license revenue. We're also anticipating that we'll not receive the voluntary tribal contribution for 2020, which would have been 150,000 in 2020. Then lastly, looking into the future, we might have potential impacts in terms of sewer utility revenues based on changes of consumption and usage patterns, property tax collections, market value impacts, and then interest rate impacts on investment income and issuing debt. So our intention, kinda moving forward, is to continue to review and monitor our financial situation. We'll continue to update city council, and it'll definitely be part of our discussions when we get into this year's budget process.
Nate, thank you very much. Questions of counselors to staff? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna say kudos to staff for putting this information out. I think all levels of government need to be doing this, having an open, transparent discussion with their constituents and the pairs of what's happening within their budgets, respectively. Thank you to the city for doing this. I really appreciate it. Nice job.
Other questions? Comments? I guess I have a couple. In regard to your first slide overview, the refund aspect for the community center coming in, we're gonna continue to see that notch every month, right, as we're closed?
With, with this slide, so these again are based on our tracking costs. So as we issued refunds, meaning we sent out the refunds, we were able to apply that code to it. Where you would see it moving forward is we're not necessarily bringing in those revenues.
Yeah.
So we don't have a way to necessarily track the refunds going out. It's more on revenue not being received, if that, if that makes sense. But if, if there are programs that get canceled that we have people sign up for, yes, you could continue to see that.
Okay. And then furthering on that page, the personnel leave aspect has grown, obviously, from March to April. Let's say that things continue to turn the dial here coming in June. Would we see that number then move, move down a little bit, would we think? Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Reynolds?
Mayor, that's a hard call to make because, you know, essentially, even if we're bringing staff back, the federal government obviously has passed leave that is now a federal right of employees to use in certain situations, whether it be childcare, whether it be personal health concerns, et cetera. So I don't know the answer to that question. You know, we will continue to monitor it. We are very concerned overall about the health of our employees first and foremost, and there are some employees that we know already that we won't be bringing back specifically because they have some health concerns or some issues in the past, and so we want to make sure that we are facilitating that. So I would hope that that would be the case, but I can't give you a firm determination on it.
And then probably my last question is in regard to property taxes, which there's been some payment due date relief, but those are due in May and payable to the City in June, and we probably won't have a handle on the percentage of that number until July, late July, is that correct, Nate?
I can speak on that a little bit. So the County did pass a resolution that would allow for payments without penalties for 60 days after their regular due date, I believe it was, 60 or 90 days. But there are some restrictions that you have to show that you have a hardship due to the COVID-19, and you have to have a liability of under 100,000, and it also won't apply to escrows that are already been paid. So with that being said, that eliminates a large amount of potential, I guess, delayed or deferred payments. The County still anticipates settling what they have received, so even though we may not get, you know, 100% on the June settlement date like we normally would do, we may see, you know, 80, 90%, and then another 10% or 20% come 60 days later. So it's more of a cash flow situation for us, which we've kind of already analyzed the impact, and we don't believe it's going to be a hardship on the City at all. But once again, it's more of a, so that's the cash flow aspect of that, so it's just making sure, you know, we have the ability to make payments while we, I guess, defer receiving the money. The other aspect is, you know, whether or not it would increase the delinquencies. So if we see, you know, instead of, even after the 60-day deferral, if we're still seeing a higher percentage of not payments at that point in time, that's when we could.
And per our last update in April, we had eased, moved some things around to increase our current cash flow to carry this, is that correct?
Yeah, and we kind of did the analyzation when we heard the County was thinking about this, and basically what we've done is we haven't been where we normally would be investing out a little bit further. We've kept them more liquid or short-term in anticipation of potentially needing that for, to offset, you know, some of this revenue we would be receiving through the property tax settlement.
Very good, thank you. Other questions, Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, it's going to be an ongoing thing in my mind. Yeah, we can track these internal things, but there's probably going to be outside force issues that might trickle down to affect the City that'll still have an impact, whether it's job loss, business closure, you know, states or feds not having the money and resources to put down to counties or states or whatever. So, you know, it's nice that we're tracking our own internal stuff right now, but I think the problem is much bigger, and it's, you know, just something that we're going to have to watch how these other entities impact us down the road.
Thank you. Other counselors' questions on our financial update? Seeing none then? Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 8B1, Canterbury Southwest Planned Unit Development. Michael, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the Mayor said, this is the Canterbury Southwest PUD, Plan Unit Development, the preliminary and final plat of Canterbury Park 9th Edition. So the highlighted area in yellow is the piece that we'll be speaking about tonight. It's, the red area is the area that Canterbury currently has a contract with Pulte to do a townhome development, and then just to the north of that is the two current sites for Triple Crown Phase 1, which is almost finished, and Triple Crown Phase 2. So this is approximately 13 acres, creates one lot, six outlots. Current zoning is major recreation, this will be our new zoning under Plan Unit Development. So here are the lots that'll be created. Some of you may remember originally Lot 3 was going to be where there was going to be a daycare. Given the current pandemic issues, that particular provider has stopped all expansion, so that site will now be available. You'll see a later application after this for the first actual building that'll be up in the corner where it says Office on 2. So this gives you some ideas on dates right now, so this site will develop over the next two years. First will be the office construction on the corner, and then over the next two years, there's potential restaurant, retail, and a potential senior apartment building. The developer's been working pretty diligently with the senior apartment complex, they're spending money on final designs, that would be a market-rate project aimed at 55 and So here's the PUD landscaping plan, so what we'll be approving tonight basically is this site plan and the potential uses. Each of the uses, we'll have to come back for a PUD amendment. The next item on your agenda is actually the PUD amendment to create the office building on the corner. As you remember, in Plan Unit Developments, it's what you see is what you get, so whatever the developer proposes, that's what gets built. So here's the preliminary plat and your final plat. So that's existing Shenyon that was constructed by Canterbury up against Shenandoah. The internal streets on this particular project are driveways, so they're not real streets. We were able to include pedestrian connectivity because between Triple Crown's two phases and then the townhome phases, you're looking at over 700 units that would be in this area, and so we wanted people to be able to come out of those projects, come down Shenandoah, and then connect into this project, particularly if there's retail and restaurants in the So Planning Commission recommended approval of the three items unanimously, 6-0. Tonight, they will need separate motions for the following. One, to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat. Second would be recommend approval of the rezoning to the PUD. Third would be the recommend approval of the Canterbury Southwest PUD, and subsequent PUD amendments will be required as users are identified for those other parcels.
All right, thank you very much. So in this plotted area with these lots, as each individual under a PUD comes forward, then they make an amendment for their use and their site plans, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, so the site plan as far as the landscaping and the basic look of the lots being approved tonight, that each individual building will have to come back for an amendment as they move forward. So tonight, the second item you'll see here is the office building, and then future applications will be for the senior housing and then restaurants and retail.
So rather than approving lot by lot, we really get a more cohesive plan under this planned unit development, correct?
Correct. Mayor and Council, this gives you kind of the overall lot layout and potential uses. You'll get to see every one of them as they come through and be able to weigh in whether it matches this or whether there's necessary changes.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Counselors? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. See if I understand this right, where you have, you know, potential future uses listed, that's not necessarily locked in because each parcel's going to come back with a use. It may be consistent with what is on this plan, or it may be something a little bit different, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. The only thing you're proving tonight basically is the preliminary and final plat and that landscaping and the, what I'll call a driveway with sidewalk layout.
Do you have more, Counselor Lehman?
Well, you know, no, because they could combine two lots, I would assume.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. And they may, let's say the senior apartment building decides it's going to be bigger, they could then come back and replat and take another lot.
Other questions of staff? Seeing none then? Is the applicant want to make a presentation, or we're good? All right. So pretty straightforward, we would see every lot and proposed building come back for our further approval, so they're under a PUD, there's some flexibility, but also some controls from the City, and we would be able to see every building and use come back on any single lot or even combination of a lot. Counselor Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do like this idea. We all have run into the folks that don't want something built in their backyard. At least this gives us a framework, it might not give us exact businesses, but it gives us a good framework so folks know who might be moving into that senior living facility that this is the plan, and if this is something that's going to bother you, you may want to reconsider, but at least it's out there, it may change. So with that, I'll take the first one if someone else wants to get a few more, but I would make a motion to adopt resolution number R 2020-068, which rescinds resolution number R 2019-083, a resolution that approved the preliminary and final plat of Canterbury Park 9th Edition.
Brennan, seconds.
I have a motion and a second to rescind the previous preliminary and final plat, and further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much.
I'll take the second one, Mayor. I make a motion to adopt resolution number R 2020-069, a resolution approving a new preliminary and final plat of Canterbury Park 9th Edition.
Waiting second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting, a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you all very much, next up? Counselor Contreras.
I'll take the third one, adopt resolution number 2020-001, in ordinance rezoning property from major recreation to PUD zoning.
Brennan, seconds.
I have a motion and a second to rezone the property from MR, Major Recreation, to PUD zoning. Further discussion? Counselor Lehman?
What's allowable uses in a PUD zoning?
Mayor and Council, it's anything the underlying zoning that was previously there would be allowed, so this is a major rec, it's pretty broad, I think there must be 20 or 30 different categories. But again, excuse me, this is a little unusual, when you get to the PUD, you actually will see every use and every building, so as long as they're in conformance kind of with this concept plan and they come back to you, you'll actually see the building shape for them and size.
If there was a use that we didn't feel fit, could we, when we see that building on that site plan for one of these lots as a PUD amendment, does it have to be an approved use?
Mayor and Council, it'd have to be a use that was currently allowed formally in the major rec zone. I can't think of a use, but I'm sure someone could come up with something and you could reject it. Again, this goes each time to the Planning Commission, there's a public hearing there where there's, as we've learned, the last one, the last Planning Commission went to 11:15, so people, I think PUD is a benefit of them, is you get a lot of public input.
Yep, okay. PUDs are technically really designed to make a better project, both for the City and the developer, but as I watched these over the metro area in the last 20 years. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much. There's one left on our list.
Mayor?
Counselor Brennan?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 20020, 02020, no, 02020-002, an ordinance approving Plan Unit Development District Number 3, Canterbury Southwest PUD. Second, Contreras.
Okay, motion by Counselor Brennan, second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion, Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. The question I have is what's the difference between what we previously did by rezoning the property to a PUD zoning as listed on the map? Is District 3 larger than what we just approved?
No, Mayor and Council, you're actually adopting the PUD, so that site plan is what you're actually adopting as the PUD overlay, basically. We used to do these by overlays, we don't, we actually do them as hard zoning now. So instead of being major rec with an overlay, you're actually now doing it to this exact PUD that you have before you.
Did that help clarify, Counselor Lehman?
No, Mayor, it doesn't. I thought the very last action we took was to rezone from major rec to a PUD zoning, and now we're...
So Counselor Member Lehman, you took it out of major rec and created the PUD, you're now actually doing the rezone to the specific PUD? The PUD was generic, and now you're actually adopting the ordinance that creates the very specific PUD zone?
Okay, and District 3 encompasses what?
It's that small red outlined parcel, it's just the southwest development, it's everything sort of to the west of Shenyon.
So it's all the parcels that were listed in the rezoning?
Mayor and Council, that's correct, and if you hang on 10 seconds, Andy's going to pull up the map.
It's, I believe, only for that rectangular shape with the...
You had it right there.
We'll get there, we're going to make it happen.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
So the PUD zone that you're actually adopting tonight is the area highlighted in the yellow, so when Pulte comes back for their townhouse development, that will be another PUD, and that would be in the red zone.
We're only approving the yellow today.
Correct, that's why it says PUD right on.
And the lots within it.
Correct.
So District 3 is the yellow area.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. We're numbering them so that somewhere down the road, when we all get hit by a bus, we know where they all are.
Is that a better clarification, Counselor Lehman?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Further discussion. There is a motion on the table and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
I...
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much for that. And actually, now, a lot, a single lot is coming forward with a plan. Canterbury Southwest PUD Amendment for Greystone Construction. Michael's here to present.
As the mayor said, so this has just happened by circumstances. The planning commission meeting was canceled in April. And so you would have seen all of the things you just did earlier, and this would have followed the next month. But because we were delayed, everything's kind of pushed together here. So tonight, you're seeing the first actual PUD amendment for the PUD you just created for Greystone Construction. This is their very specific site, right in the corner. So the site address is 1290 Shenandoah Drive. It's approximately 1.4 acres. They're proposing a two-level 27,000 square foot office building for Greystone Construction. It's will be their new corporate headquarters. They'll be in the upper floor. Other tenants, unknown at this time, will be in the other floors. And it's, as we just had, this is proposed to be part of that Canterbury Southwest PUD. So highlighted in red is the parcel that you'll be acting on tonight. So when you adopt this, you will be amending the PUD only in the highlighted red area. So again, here's how it sits with all the landscaping. So this is their proposed construction limits. Go ahead. And this is their building. I think this will be a nice start, kind of a landmark building for this project. And this is the shot from the corner. They really made an effort to pull this building to the corner. We're really trying to make this a much more pedestrian area, not as suburban as some of the shopping strip malls that you see. And this is really kind of a Keystone landmark building on the corner. Go ahead. So this is a mixture of different bricks, stones, and metal and wood materials. I think Greystone's had a great reputation, the community doing some pretty high-quality buildings, including one that's right by the existing City Hall. And this is kind of their new vision for the future of the company. So they've worked really hard on this building with staff, and we're pretty excited about it. Here's some good perspectives of the scale. So it has a nice feature, it's got a balcony kind of looking out on the rest of the project so they can see parts of Canterbury. So planning commission unanimously approved the PUD amendment, 6-0, recommend city council approval of the amendment of the Canterbury Southwest PUD. And again, additional subsequent PUD amendments will be acquired as users identified for those other parcels.
All right. Questions of staff? I can start off. So Michael, to access, to go to Greystone, I'm going to, I can come off Shenandoah, or I can come off Shenan, and then take that driveway in, correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So they will be building that driveway and some of the pedestrian facilities so they'll be able to access the Greystone building now. That's why you had to kind of approve the earlier plat and the PUD so that we could set those driveways in place so there would be access to this particular site.
Okay. And then my last question, this building seems to be orientated towards the northeast, up against a roundabout. Any traffic sightline problems at all?
Mayor and Council, no. I mean, one of the benefits of roundabout, you look differently than you would at a standard intersection. So as part of this, they've designed their site in plans for the future roundabouts.
Good, thank you. Other questions of staff in regard to what you're seeing on the site plan? Counselor Lehman.
The shared parking will be put in with this project?
Mayor and Council, they'll be building enough parking for their building and for the adjacent future hotels, so they'll have some shared parking at a later date when that hotel gets built. Because the hotel basically is parking at night, and their office building parking during the day.
Follow-up question, Counselor Lehman?
It was my understanding during the planning commission discussion that part of their parking on this lot is for use to the south, and that that parking would be built with this project for the lot to the south's future sharing use.
They're building the, basically the kind of, if we can pull up the plan. We'll get you the plan, Councilmember.
They're, they're building parking just to the north of...
There you go.
Lot 5.
The area in red is the area of the parking that they'll be building. So this, a little bit of this will serve that restaurant or retail, and a little bit of this also serves the hotel. But it made the most sense to build this out right now because it connects, we need a connection to that driveway access.
But the parking for this lot that we're doing a PUD amendment for will be built, right?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. And they have more than enough parking in this parking scheme. Because some of this is shared by the hotel on the one end, and some of it's shared by the retail and restaurant. But the office building itself has more than adequate parking.
Did that answer your question, Counselor Lehman?
Well, Mayor, I just want to make sure we're clear on who's responsible for what parking throughout the development process. That's all I'm asking.
Yep. And Mayor and Council, that's why these lots are out. And if you saw, they're building whatever parking's on their lot. So the future users will have access to that parking through cross-parking and easements.
Further questions of this PUD amendment? It's a very nice-looking building, showcase section here at a premier corner in our community. Counselor Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one thing I know about Greystone Construction and Mr. O'Brien is I believe, I'm not going to be concerned about the construction of that building. It's going to be a beautiful building, I'm sure. So with that, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 02020-003, an ordinance approving a PUD amendment to PUD District Number 3.
Second by Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion, discussion. I guess I just want to comment, congratulations to Greystone, another stake in the ground here at our Canterbury Commons buildout area. You got a great lot, great location, and we hope many other stakes come as neighbors to you. Further discussion, further discussion. Seeing none, by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Moving ahead then to 9A, which is the city bill list for our review. Any questions? Seeing none, we would move forward to our liaison report. Counselor Brennan.
Thank you. I went to the SPC meeting last night, and the commission approved the 2019 audit, financial audit. Some notations that are going to be made onto the audit regarding the pay cap. We also are in the process of planning for the 2020 for goals. I presented four that I would like to see part of our plan, our goal setting. One is looking at a water treatment plant feasibility study. Two, review of internal policies and procedures. Three, reducing water connection charge and fees. And four is developing a joint city and SPC Commission Planning and Economic Development Committee.
I think that's it. I also attended a Live, Learn, and Earn Housing meeting and had Mr. Reynolds send out that information to you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Contreras, liaison report.
Thank you, Mayor. No actual business, just a couple little notes. For the school, Superintendent Mike Redmond put out a special thank you video message to the entire school community. We are Shaco Strong. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to watch it. Thanking everyone for all the hard work with Distant Learning with the Shakopee Diversity Alliance. Just an update for Saturday, the 16th. Again, SDA participated on the eighth grocery drive-through, serving 502 families, 2,510 individuals. Again, great work. And I encourage anybody who wants to volunteer, we'll be out there again this Saturday. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I met with the scale group. Most of it was centered around COVID issues from various communities and various counties. Congresswoman Craig was in attendance and gave us more time than what she allocated, answered quite a bit of questions. That was deeply appreciated from her. Dave Orlowsky from the school district was present. I gave a kudos from the city or from myself for the job the school has done for all the challenges that were placed on them, whether it's feeding the kids or the home education. Great job by the school district. So I did ask for a presentation to get me caught up since that was our first meeting of scale. And I got a slideshow presentation from the former chair that I will be sending to Mr. Reynolds to get out to rest of council. I asked specifically about their accomplishments over the past year. And then we can have a conversation after all the rest of council has the opportunity to look at that presentation, and then we, as a body, can have a discussion on what we're looking for from scale. Thank you.
Counselor Lehman, thank you very much. Counselor Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no liaison reports, but I do want to put a thank you out to the Shakopee Lions Club. They've donated some shades and benches for Shakopee Lions Park and are stepping up their commitment to putting some projects together for our Lions Park. And we're excited for whatever comes out of that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For my liaison report, with this COVID-19, a lot of groups are meeting remotely. I don't have, I do not have an update. However, I do want to congratulate Counselor Brennan on becoming a finalist for the Met Council Livable Communities Committee. I know I served on that committee almost 19 years ago. And so good luck in your interview coming up here over the next week or two. And just wanted a little shout out to Counselor Brennan.
Thank you.
That's all my report. Mr. Reynolds, administration report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, the legislative session has come to a close, well, it's come to a pause. We will have another special session, I believe, which is slated for somewhere around the timeframe of June 15th. The bonding bill that came from the Senate did not have any Shakopee projects in it, which is very unfortunate after working so hard to get it in the governor's bill and then getting it in the House bill. To not have anything for Shakopee in the Senate bill was troubling. But we're going to see if we can't find a way to, you know, now that that bill did not pass, and we know that there is going to be a bonding bill. I think everybody agrees, the leadership from both houses believes that there'll be a bonding bill. Hopefully, we can have at least one of our projects on it. Mankato got their Riverbank stabilization project in the bill. So, you know, my hope is that at least we can get the Riverbank stabilization piece, which is desperately needed in the downtown area.
Mr. Reynolds, have you talked to Senator Pratt about this?
The mayor and I both reached out to Senator Pratt, and we've asked him to give us some ideas on what we can do, if anything, at this point. He has been receptive, and we're looking forward to working with him on the issue. The other thing that I kind of wanted to address is that, you know, we're really very fortunate in Shakopee for a couple of reasons. One, we're in such great financial shape that we're going to weather this storm a lot better than a lot of other communities that, not only in the United States, but even in the relatively affluent metro cities area. But we're also fortunate just by happenstance and luck. And, you know, I've been, as you know, been having discussions with managers and administrators in the metro area for, ever since COVID happened, at least on a weekly, if not almost daily, conversations. And last Friday, we were having conversations about how our organizations had been performing during the crisis. And I said, you know, I got to be honest, we have to be operating at 97%. I don't think we've missed a beat almost on anything. And a lot of managers were surprised by that. But then, and I said, well, understand where we are. First, we just built a new city hall. And when we built this city hall, we built it for the future. And that included the IT to be able to operate without paper. And, you know, so we had already taken a giant leap in a COVID world before even realizing that it was going to be needed. And so a lot of the stuff that, you know, Mr. Kersky does is all online. You know, a lot of the things that we do at this point are pretty much online. And it was because of us building this new city hall and making sure that we are looking towards the future as part of that build. We didn't bring a lot of paper with us. We threw out reams and reams and reams and old equipment and everything else as part of that move because this was going to be a new start, and it was going to be a new building and a new way of doing business. And it was, it is. And because of that, we have been very fortunate in our abilities to do the job. That is not the case everywhere, ladies and gentlemen. And I want to make sure you understand that because it's a credit to this particular city staff and what they've been doing, and the planning that went into the city hall construction, and the planning that went into, you know, how we do business. Our IT department has been stellar. Mr. Kersky's operations, when he first got here, I think they were using chisels and stone. That clearly isn't the case anymore. The engineering section is doing great work as well in regards to that. I'm very proud of where we are. I'm very proud of what we've been able to do. But it's a pride in this organization, and it's a pride in the people. And finally, it's a big thanks to you as a council who had the vision to move this forward and move this project forward. And it has allowed us to spring into the future and maybe a little quicker than we might... spring into the future and maybe a little quicker than we might have wanted to. But, so thank you very much. Sincerely appreciate all your support. And as I said, we're, we're firing on all cylinders and we're getting the job done.
Mayor.
Counselor Lehman.
Many on the council were pretty adamant about this city hall facility looking into the future, including myself, so. And I know we talked about the layout being such that we, we could grow into it without putting ourselves in, in a hard spot early on and, you know, we looked at 20, 30 years out. Obviously, none of us were expecting some kind of a pandemic to hit us, but sometimes luck is on your side and you're prepared without even preparing. The, the issue with the bonding, I'd like to put us in the state's position. They went from a billion and a half surplus to a $2.5 billion shortfall deficit in 30 days. You know, if, if I was in their position, I would be wondering what's the next four or six months going to look like for the state of Minnesota? I know from my sales tax receipts that I send into them, they're not like they used to be. And, and I'm sure that's an almost across-the-board type situation for the state. And I'm hoping that they're prioritizing their spending and looking out after the impacts on we, the people. Because all of this comes out of our pockets, whether it's a city, county, state, fed, whoever. And the impacts are going to be there. We haven't seen all the impacts. And as we start seeing some more of these impacts, the question really becomes, how does each level of government deal with them and what is the impact on us, the taxpayers, the end users, we, the people? So, I understand we've got a lot of projects we want funded, but we've got to put ourselves in their position and think about prioritizing. So, we'll see what happens. Maybe, maybe they'll turn their numbers around somehow. Maybe the economy will come back to life. A lot of maybes out there.
Thank you, Counselor. If that was all for your administration report, Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. Item number 10, other business. Is there any other business before this council? I have two items that I would like to bring up. And it seems like we're going to be, get some information from the governor and tomorrow about turning the dial. And we kind of got to think about over the next many weeks that our communities will be opening up and how the city can help in ways to do that. I know in talking to some metro mayors around town, they're talking about their downtowns and offering picnic tables out on maybe the sidewalk or even in some parking areas to maybe have some people want to feel more comfortable. They come and get a sandwich at a business. They don't want to sit inside. I know we built a nice new parking lot, has an extra wide sidewalk. I'd like to see staff develop a plan that we could kind of accommodate a soft rolling open that allows our residents and even our visitors some safety and to be outside during the summer. Maybe this will include sectioning off a park of, part of some parking. But I'd like to see what staff could come up with in that area. Counselor Lehman.
Totally agree with you, Mayor. I'm thinking some speakers and some outdoor music downtown might be a good idea for the summer. We don't have rhythm on the rails this year, but we sure can improvise and do some little things that enhance what you're talking about, the outside feel. My concern, here's my concern that I'd like to direct towards staff if council concurs. We've got to get this message and education piece out to the public and I see it firsthand myself at my business. Some people come in and they want to be right in your face and you have to tell them, stop, back up. I'm practicing six feet. You may not, but I am. And people need to respect that. You don't know who has an underlying condition. It really, what it comes down to is people have to respect other people's concerns with distancing and, you know, we need to get out to the public that, you know, you've got to cover your coughs. You've got to cover your sneezes, wash your hands a lot, be respectful of others that want their space. These are just common sense things that we need to get the message out that this is really a mutual respect type thing for each other. We can do this.
I appreciate that, Counselor Lehman. I think I was in a couple businesses just over the last couple of days here locally and a couple of them had required, you know, mask signs. And absolutely, I wore my mask without a problem. And if that's why, if it's signed and in a business and they're requiring that, I think we should all do that. Counselor Brennan.
I, I agree. I know personally that the restaurants are going to have a lot of stiff regulations that are put on them with the amount of number of people that they can have in their restaurant. And the, the procedures that they have to follow and they have to show it to the health department. And, and so as, as Matt was saying, that we should be supporting our businesses and our restaurants especially because, because they're, they're a little bit different than our, than our retail businesses.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, they're going to be caught by 50% on the number of people that are, can be in their restaurant. So if we can figure out a way to find a place for outdoor seating and, and, and support those businesses in places that they can, that people can sit and enjoy and get used to being around people. Because I think that's going to take a while and I think people will have to ease into that process of, of knowing that they can safely go out. Because I think there will be a, a learning curve that, that, you know, people are going to be a little hesitant to go out. So we have to support those people and we have to support our businesses.
I think from generally, from what I'm hearing, there's some consensus to have staff look at this. We don't want to encourage gatherings, you know, big gatherings, but social, spread out, safety, maybe a picnic table or something or a couple. So Counselor Whiting.
Yeah, just thought I'd add a couple thoughts. A lot of communities are piping in music. I know Counselor Lehman mentioned music. There may be possibilities to relax some of the patio permit ordinances and, or something we can do. But staff can look into that and come back with recommendations. I'd like to see what they come up with.
Thank you all for that. Do appreciate that. And let's see what staff can come up with over the next couple of weeks and bring it back and, and we can talk about it further.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Counselor, or Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, this is, this is actually was a topic of my manager's call this morning. And I've got right in front of me Lakeville, Apple Valley, Burnsville, and I know Savage is also drafting one currently. Some have been council passed. Some, the city of Burnsville was a city administrator under the, the ordinance of emergency. As opposed, this is what I propose. I, I'm waiting for Savages as well because what I want to do is to take the best parts of all of them and, and put them together. But what I would propose is to send this out, and I can do this as soon as tomorrow. We know the governor's going to make some kind of announcement tomorrow. I would like to go ahead and send this out, give you all the opportunity to review it, get your comments back, and then just go ahead and sign the policy under the state of emergency as the city administrator. That way, we can make it happen without waiting two weeks to, to wait back for a council vote. It certainly can be done under the, it can either, it can be done, each three of these have been done different ways. One is a policy that was done by the city manager. One's a resolution. And one is just a policy to temporarily suspend outdoor customer service area restrictions signed by the mayor. So, under the current state of emergencies, there's lots of options that we can do this. I very much want you all to see what we come up with. I very much want you to comment on it. But then at that point, I would just, with your thumbs up approval, sign it and make it happen. Get the word out through the chamber and other organizations to our restaurants and then move it forward.
Is it, Mayor, is it safe to assume that all of our recommendations will be incorporated somehow?
Yeah, I, you know, unless it's something that, you know, you want me to hand out hundred dollar bills on the street corner, Counselor Lehman. But yes, I mean, we want to do everything we can to assist our restaurants. And like I said, I'm still waiting for Savages because I want to get their, their draft as well and then we'll put something together for everybody.
Let's see what we can come up with and, and help our, help our community and go from there.
Mayor, I appreciate your thinking of this and I appreciate the staff for considering this. I think we have really great people on staff that are well qualified in knowing what our businesses are needing.
Thank you all. I do have-
Incorporate the needs of the business owners and have a conversation with them.
Okay. I do, I do know that Stillwater is working on something too as well.
Yep, Stillwater also.
So, I had one other item with the most recent announcement of municipal pools closing and we, the decision to close Sand Venture. I'd like to suggest that maybe this is the time to have staff look into the long-term game plan of Sand Venture. Engage the community somehow, some way. I know that it's an iconic piece of our community that was unique built. But the technology's out of date and I do know over the last, Counselor Lehman, last 20 years, I'm not sure how much money we've put into it. But I think we owe it to our community to look at either what it can become or we just don't want it to be a continued real drag on the technology aspect. And I would like to see something as staff dig into that. Counselor Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the Lions Park Committee has talked about that and are looking and, and some of their thoughts are really thinking big. And potentially a public-private partnership with some sort of a water park is the big idea. But, you know, that would take some public support and quite a bit of private help. So, there's some ideas and I would look forward to discussing that.
Counselor Whiting, or Counselor Brennan?
Thank you. I, I know that we had had these conversations in the park planning, what is it? The park planning commission board that we had put together. So I would think that we could go back through that information and, and take a look at the data and, and the ideas that were put together at that point.
I just know that the, I'm, I'm fond of Sand Venture. I think it's served our community very well. But when I meet with staff and talk with them about the ongoing maintenance aspect, I know the technical subsidy is, is, is there as well and I just, what do we want to do as a community? And I, I'd like seeing it's going to be shut down for a whole year or, you know, this season. Maybe this is the time and leapfrog out of the, what the park planning study. The Lions, just look at what, what could be or not and think really long-term and think about it in a efficient, effective way for the long-term costs of our community. Enough consensus? Counselor Lehman?
It seems to me the first step would, would, to, would be to gauge the community, what's the will of the people? I mean, if the people overwhelmingly want it, then, you know, we represent them, so we should probably get a feel for what it is they want.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, and, and I think it's important that, that everybody understands what the true cost of Sand Venture is for 60 days of operation at the most during a year. And, and that is, that is frankly, part of the reason why Sand Venture won't open. One is timing, but the other piece is the expense of operating Sand Venture really isn't justifiable in this current environment with all the other expenses that we have and the revenue decreases that we have occurring. And just to get Sand Venture up to, as it currently sits, to a sustainable, you know, you're looking at $2 to $3 million at least just to replace all the worn-out pieces that, that currently exist in, in the park. So it will, if, if something is done, something has to be done one way or the other. And so, you know, costing that out and then seeing what, I think it's always easy for people to say, well, yeah, we want this. But it's important that the caveat is, well, how do we pay for it? And, and I think that's, that's, that's the other part of the discussion.
I know that when I was listening to the bonding proposals, especially the ones for Shakopee, when I listened in to those meetings over at the Capitol back in February, I think, it's interesting that communities were coming forward and requesting bonding money for their pools, whether indoor or outdoor. And I, I do follow Bunker Hills up in a northern community there that's about 20 years old. And, and they're asking for $12 million in bonding dollars to maintain it, upgrade it, and, and get it in a spot. And I, I looked at that and just went, wow, I, I, you know. And it, and it just does, wasn't one pool. There were several asks. I know that we're not doing that. But certainly, we want to look at, look at the long-term and understand the cost. Have the community engaged and find, let staff figure out a way to do that. Counselor Brennan?
I, I think it's important to always take a look at our assets and, and how they're performing and, and the benefit to the community.
All right. Those were my two items on other business. Any other business before this council? Otherwise, we would move forward and adjourn to June 2nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And before a motion, I want to make sure that we tell our residents and our community to have a, a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend to all. Counselor Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June 2nd, 7:00 PM.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan to adjourn and further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan? Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you all. We are adjourned at 8:44.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, thank you.
Sign away. I signed on mine. What happened?